Do a call to order and pledge allegiance to the flag. This is the board meeting of the District 208 Board of Education.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Nardi, could we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 We have recognitions this evening. Dr. Freitas.
We do. Good evening, honorable board members and guests. Music, Illinois Music Education Association. On an annual basis, the Illinois Music Education Association hosts a state festival experience for students involved in general music events, band, chorus, jazz, and orchestra ensembles. Students undergo a rigorous audition process to receive a nomination to participate in the All-State Event. Please congratulate the following students who were selected to perform at the All-State Event held on January 26th through 28th in Puria. Lily Berkowitz, Honors Chorus; Victoria Gentio, Honors Chorus; Sidney Lefoe, Honors Chorus; Aiden Lefoe, Honors Chorus; Charlotte Nestler, Honors Chorus; and Emma Strong Orchestra. Additionally, the All-State Event holds a seminar that encourages high school students interested in music education as a career to gain a more practical understanding of the profession. Please congratulate our future music educators who were selected to participate in the IOMEA Seminar, Olivia Bushio and Caitlin Fowler. Let's give it up for our students. Lili Berkowitz, come on up, Lily. Okay. Sidney? Aiden? Charlotte? Emma? Olivia? Caitlin? Everyone, so good. Time for pictures. Okay.
Congratulations, everybody.
[applause]
Scotty Awards, what's next, Mr. Dr. Freitas? I'm sorry.
Come in. The Scotty Award is a recognition given by West Forty, our regional office of education, to students nominated by their school that demonstrate good citizenship and are group role models for their peers. I would like to recognize Emily Hernandez and Patrick Hart.
Unfortunately, Emily cannot be here. She had a conflict. Congratulations, Patrick. Proudie.
All right, here we go. Athletics, girls gymnastics. We would like to recognize Leah Christensen for qualifying for the vault in gymnastics. Congratulations to Leah. Let's give it up for Leah. And we would also like to recognize Coach Sammy, Coach Karen, and Coach Al. Let's give it up for our coaches. Come on.
Coach Karen, do you have anything to add?
I do. Leah will just remain standing for a moment. Leah Christensen, IHSA State Preliminary Qualifier in the vault. Leah Christensen made it to the state prelims on vault, securing her spot at sectionals by earning a fourth-place finish. At the state prelims, Leah placed 16th out of 33 with a 9.45. She was extremely close to advancing to the next round. This was Leah's sophomore year on the girls gymnastics varsity team. Some of her additional accomplishments included placing a conference, the IHSA regionals, and several varsity invitationals during the regular season. Leah was a critical component to the girls gymnastics program, and we look forward to Leah's continued success in the years to come. Congratulations, Leah.
Congratulations, Leah. Congratulations, coaches.
And for boys swimming, we would like to recognize Andrew Rosa, who qualified for the 100-yard butterfly and the 100-yard breaststroke. Drew?
I believe Drew is at the national competition.
That's right. That's right. We'll give it up for him anyway.
Boys basketball. We would like to recognize Stefan Ciciak for second-team All-State. Congratulations to Stefan.
Congratulations. I'm proud of you. Okay?
Stefan led our team to a 26-6 win-loss record overall in the conference championship. Stefan averaged over 17 points per game and over 10 rebounds per game. He recorded 16 double-doubles on the season, which included a 28-point, 28-rebound game against Aurora Christian. He was named Illinois Basketball Coaches Association Second Team All-State, which is the highest All-State honor an RB player has received in over 50 years. He was named All-Tournament to the prestigious Jack Tosh Holiday Classic and was named Metro Suburban Conference Player of the Year. Congratulations, Stefan.
Very good. Congratulations, all sorts of Coach Ryan Gruber and his staff.
Girls wrestling. This past winter, we had two state qualifiers. We would like to recognize Eleanor Affey for qualifying in the 120-pound weight class and Danelli Villagomez for qualifying in the 135-pound weight class.
You have the head coach here, Will.
And we got Coach Kirby here. I'm proud of you, Coach, okay?
Hi, Coach Kirby.
Eleanor, HIHSA Girls State Individual Finals, 120 pounds. Eleanor has made great strides in both her personal wrestling skills and as the leader of the growing girls wrestling program. Eleanor has qualified for state for the second time in a row and came within two matches of placing at the state tournament. Eleanor should put herself in a position to make a big splash in her senior season. Congratulations, Eleanor. Danelli has burst onto the scene as a freshman in girls wrestling and qualified for the state tournament in her first year. Danelli was two matches away from placing at the state tournament. This experience should help her prepare to make a run at a medal next year and continue to grow into a leader of the girls wrestling team. Congratulations, Danelli.
Thank you, Coach Kirby.
We would also like to give a shout-out to Coach Kirby Senior, the head coach of the girls team. So, a big shout-out to Coach Kirby Senior. Boys wrestling. We would like to congratulate Joshua Gonzalez for qualifying for state in the 138-pound weight class. Let's give it up for Joshua Gonzalez. And of course, Coach Kirby. And fun fact, Josh had the state runner-up on his back for a few seconds, okay? 10 more seconds, he would've stuck him. Right? Proud of him.
Can we call up the other boys first and then so Coach Kirby could read all the...
Josh, Josh, I mean, his junior season wrestling, the best that he has since joining the team as a freshman. Josh had arguably one of the most exciting 18 seconds of the sectional to get a last-second takedown, being down one point to qualify for the state tournament. Josh has steadily improved to become one of the best wrestlers on the team, and we look forward to what Josh can do building off his state tournament experience. Congratulations to Josh.
Do you want to just read out the other two names?
We would also like to recognize Devonte Givens, state finals for 285-pound weight class. Congratulations to Devonte Givens. Give it up for Devonte. We'd also like to recognize Senior Joseph Madonna, IHSA Boys Individual State Finals, 220-pound weight class. Congratulations.
All right, continuing the recognitions. Competitive dance team. We would like to recognize the following students who qualified for the Eleanor Drill Team Association State Finals. Aubrey Agnew, Chloe Alexander, Ellie Christensen, Olivia Glave, Isabella Kirst, Sophia Lee, Sophia Miller, Grace Pancros, Amelia Royer, Maya Gonzalez, Anna Pinnick, and Liliana Nieto. Have you heard your name? Please come on up.
Did they know?
Next, we would like to recognize Bryce Pukurik, honorable mention for IHSA All-State Academic Team for girls cross-country, girls basketball, and girls track. Bryce?
My name is Jordan.
Congratulations.
Let's get Coach Mack, too.
Bryce Pukurik, honorable mention, IHSA All-State Academic Team. Was one of 500 nominations who earned honorable mention status. According to head girls track and field coach Ian Robbins, who could not be here with us tonight, Bryce has achieved all conference honors in both cross-country and track and field in each season a conference meet has run. She has also qualified for the state competition in all years of cross-country and competed her junior year of track and hopefully to qualify again her senior year. Bryce has been a team leader for the track and field team since the day she started running, serving as a mentor and training partner for many of the young art athletes and a role model for how to compete and work as a varsity athlete. In addition, Bryce has excelled inside the classroom. She has maintained a 4.0 GPA and challenged herself with several AP courses throughout the high school experience. She ranked in the top 5% of her class. Bryce has even managed to take every single AP-level math course offered at this school. Congratulations. Given a number of seasons, Coach Blair Johnson has coached Bryce, I thought it would be appropriate for Coach to take the opportunity to speak to Bryce on this special accomplishment.
Thank you very much. Well, Coach Robbins took all my thunder, but I got a little bit here in my files. Let's see. It all started in a dimly lit hospital. Oh, no. I think the parents told me everything. Actually, I met Bryce when she was 13. She'd just turned 13. So, it was in the summer. She came to running camp, and Coach Vinegas and I both were like, oh, that's awesome. She brought a friend with her, at least one. And let's see, what did I say? I did this, so I wouldn't talk too long. Let's see. Let's see. She was full of energy. She was smart. She had a sense of humor, and she was committed. We knew that, and we saw that, and we knew it was going to be a great four years. She came, and I'll leave all that track stuff out of there, but she played varsity basketball, ran every year. Personal traits, she's intelligent, sense of humor. Her friend, she pays attention to her friends and family, her ability to face challenges and overcome those challenges, and the way she demands the best from herself and commits to accomplish those demands or those challenges is really something that shines with her. The last thing, and I'll get out of here. To receive this award, I don't know if everybody understands this, but you have to have the backing of your AV, your principal, your coaches, and I just wanted to say that we all have your back. How's that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach Johnson, and thank you, everyone, for being here for our special recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you.
Actually, we had one more for the choir. Came in empty. For the choir.
Sidney, come on up. Sidney, come on up.
I got you here somewhere, Charlie. We'll do this.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, my God. No, I got you some. I got you. You're good. All right, Sidney, where? Well, this is my awards.
We know we have one for you, Sidney.
I know. Sorry. Hold on.
Did you hear? He was saying that, does he have it?
Okay. I think these are the things. No, no, no. I know I had you here right now.
They should take another picture of it, all of them together.
Hey, you go, Sidney. There we go. Come on up. If you were All-State, you know who you are. Leah, come on up. See, the crowd gets us going, right? That's right. Over here.
Hey, girls. Sorry. Did anyone release? He's stuck around.
Mr. Barman?
Yes.
Okay. One more time.
Thank you for accommodating the levels.
Congratulations again to everybody.
Thank you.
Tech Award? This last one.
One more group, folks. One more group. All right, next up is the Technology Award. Awards from the National Center for Women and Information Technology. Danielle Demonte, Junior Rising Star. Kate Drazov, Senior Honorable Mention. Amanda Kogut, Senior Regional Winner. Emma Lopez, Sophomore Regional Winner. And Maria Watkins Sanders, Junior Regional Winner. Historically, we earned the Rising Star or the Honorable Mention Awards. We have only had one regional winner, so to have three regional winners from RB is exceptional. These ladies will receive their awards from the regional affiliate in the near future. More importantly, they will be part of a network that can lead to more information about careers, internship, and even jobs later in life. The affiliate award winners are based on the significant demonstration of the following: progression in computer experiences and technical skills, leadership through teams, clubs, and teaching peers, and participation in computing-related extracurricular activities. Let's give it up for them.
Yay, Mariah. Is it Mariah? Okay.
Congratulations to you both.
Yes, congratulations.
Danielle, are you here? Danielle? Kate? Are you here? Amanda? Amanda? I have a picture of my... Congratulations. All right, folks, and that concludes our recognitions.
How was a good time, too, unless you like to stay?
Wanted to stay for a minute?
That was a happy recognition.
Thank you. Good evening. Take care back home.
Well, we have a meeting now. You're welcome to state for the meeting. Please.
Okay. We'll mention the name.
Do we have anyone here for visitor... I guess we thought it was one of the players. I'll give another second. I think Mr. was coming up. Okay, good evening. Do we have anyone here for visitor statements this evening? We do. Please come on. Let me read a quick introductory paragraph. You take a seat, if you'd like. You're welcome to stand as well. "The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the Board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent." So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to you.
My name is Olivia Bushio. I'm here tonight on behalf of both the music department and the special ed department. We had, earlier this year, I believe, there was talk of implementing a high-five choir next year, which I was super excited about because I think high-five choirs are very essential to both music, like special ed departments and music. And actually, at ILMEA, I was there for the I'M AT Conference. So, I went to a bunch of presentations and performances and seminars, and I went to one on high-five choirs, and it was just so amazing to see, like, a choir that is built to accommodate students with disabilities because a lot of them, regular choirs, don't necessarily fit into their schedules, home or school schedules. Some of them, like, don't feel comfortable at concerts, and it's just a really beautiful thing. And I just think that in the future, if there is an opportunity to bring back the high-five choir, it's essential to our school. To our school, I think it would just be a really great thing to have because music is proven to be very effective in the lives of students with disabilities. So, I just wanted to share the importance of that and just, yeah, share its importance and encourage you to try to work on implementing that because I think it's a really important thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any additional visitor statements this evening? Seeing none, thank you. Seeing none, we're going to move on to discussion information items and FOIA requests.
Well, we had two FOIA requests, SMART Procure and Honorable Retired Teachers Association, and the responses are included in the Board of Education packet.
I don't believe there were any questions on that. What about the update on district goals?
No update on district goals. I mean, you know, this is a short turnaround. We only have one meeting in March, and we just went through any updates on February 28th, so I don't believe there are any new activities added to the district goals since February 28th.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? Seeing none, we're going to move on to additional discussion items. Does anyone have anything for later on this agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and write to the president's report. Write to the superintendent's report because the president doesn't have a report.
Due to the short turnaround time from our last Board of Education meeting on February 28th, I only have two updates. Number one, unfortunately, there was a terrible accident on Sunday, March 5th, 2023, on First Avenue. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the families that were impacted. The school's digital sign on the corner of First Avenue in Ridgewood was significantly damaged. We are working with our insurance company and the vendor, who installed the original sign-on replacement option. Friday, March 17th, will be our annual Career and Trades Fair. That will be taking place in the East Gym. This was well-attended last year. I believe there's also a smaller college fair occurring on that day as well, but the Trades Fair is something new that we started last year, and so we're trying to continue to grow that so students can explore their career pathways as well as meeting the state expectation for opportunities to explore career pathways. I have no updates in regards to any of my superintendent advisory councils, and that is my superintendent report for March 14th.
Okay, thank you. Doctors Matana.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information through the month of February, which represents roughly 67% of our fiscal year. I'll begin on Board Book Page 29 with our monthly summary report. You can see the total operating revenue for the month was $454,123, with 51% of that coming from evidence-based funding, our state funding, 17% coming from federal and state reimbursement, and 11% each coming from registration fees and property tax. The overall expenditures for the month were $2,349,251, with 70% towards salary and benefits, 10% towards operations and maintenance, and primarily, a large portion of that was our liability insurance payment for the year, and then 7% towards special education tuition. Next, our monthly financial statements. You can see the summary of the fund balances shows that the district operating funds have an overall positive balance, and this money will continue to be used to pay bills until the spring property tax collection arrives a little later this year in April and May. On the next page is the summary of revenues, which shows that the district has received 50.5% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is significantly lower to this time last fiscal year, which was 65%. A small portion of that is due to the delay in the fall property tax collection, but also a large portion, a majority of that, is due to the spring property tax collection. Normally, in February, we would start to receive some of that money from escrow accounts, so that's why there's that discrepancy. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 68% of the budgeted expenditures for the year. This amount is tracking a little higher than this time last fiscal year, which is around roughly 64%. As always, I've included a statement of revenue and expenditures for all of our board accounts for the month of February, as well as our student activity accounts. And then lastly, I have two informational items for the board tonight. One of the projects that we are working on is replacing some of the stair treads in the building. There are three to four stairwells that need to have their stairwell treads replaced. Stairwell Q is by far the worst. If you go up those stairs, which are just down the hallway, you'll see a lot of the stairs are being held together with duct tape to prevent a tripping hazard. We're hopeful that we can complete that over spring break, but it depends on when we can get the materials in. The cost for that one is the most expensive, at $17,000. The other ones, we're going to be able to just do partial replacements of half of the stairwells, so those will come in a little cheaper. And then lastly, for the board, I provided the annual budget calendar on Board Book Page 54. And this is the calendar that I use to create the budget in collaboration with the Finance Advisory Council, as well as Dr. Skankis. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Kristin, I don't believe we received any questions on your report, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments here this evening? Nope. Seeing none. Dr. Freitas, how do you want to handle, since you have a number of reports under your agenda, and you have the student advisor report?
Yeah, I'll say mine and our student advisors for last. I like to start with my assistant principal, if that's okay with the President. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kelly Lindquist and Ms. Beth Augustine for our staffing report.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Great.
Good. So, what you have in front of you is, first, our staffing summary that we provide each year once we go through the process of sectioning, once we hit February, our favorite time of year. So, the summary sheet gives you an idea of not only the comparison between this current year's FTE and our projected FTE next year, but also tracks the changes. In the memo that I attached with the staffing summary, I did just some high-level summaries on what we're changing in each department. So, I'm not going to read that all to you, but you can see where we're going up and down. For example, in Applied Arts and English, we are increasing FTE, where then you will see in Fine Arts and Mathematics, we're lowering our FTE a little bit. The sectioning and staffing process is always an interesting puzzle to put together. It starts, obviously, at the projections that Kristin makes with regard to enrollment, and then there are several factors that we have to take into consideration, as well as several areas that staff can straddle, more than one content area, as well as certain courses can live in one content area, as well as the other, specific to courses like consumer economics. And I went to one on high five choirs and it was just so amazing to see like a choir that is built to accommodate students with disabilities because a lot of them, regular choirs, don't necessarily fit into their schedules, home or school schedules. Some of them like don't feel comfortable at concerts and it's just a really beautiful thing. And I just think that in the future, if there is an opportunity to bring back the high five choir, it's essential to our school, to our school. I think it would just be a really great thing to have because music is proven to be very effective in the lives of students with disabilities. So I just wanted to share the importance of that and just, yeah, share its importance and encourage you to try to work on implementing that because I think it's a really important thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia.
Thank you.
Are there any additional visitor statements this evening? Seeing none, thank you. Seeing none, we're going to move on to discussion information items and FOIA requests.
We had two FOIA requests, Smart Procure and Illinois Retired Teachers Association, and the responses are included in the Board of Education packet.
I don't believe there were any questions on that. What about the update on district goals?
No update on district goals. I mean, you know, this is a short turnaround. We only have one meeting in March and we just went through any updates on February 28th. So I don't believe there are any new activities added to the district goals since February 28th.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? Seeing none, we're going to move on to additional discussion items. Does anyone have anything for later on this agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and write to the president's report. Write to the superintendent's report because the president doesn't have a report.
Due to the short turnaround time from our last Board of Education meeting on February 28th, I only have two updates. Number one, unfortunately, there was a terrible accident on Sunday, March 5th, 2023 on First Avenue. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the families that were impacted. The school's digital sign on the corner of First Avenue in Ridgewood was significantly damaged. We are working with our insurance company and the vendor who installed the original sign-on replacement option. Friday, March 17th, will be our annual Career and Trades Fair. That will be taking place in the East Gym. This was well-attended last year. I believe there's also a smaller college fair occurring on that day as well. But the Trades Fair is something new that we started last year and so we're trying to continue to grow that so students can explore their career pathways as well as meeting the state expectation for opportunities to explore career pathways. I have no updates in regards to any of my superintendent advisory councils and that is my superintendent report for March 14th.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Smetana.
Good evening. Tonight I'll provide the Board of Education with financial information through the month of February, which represents roughly 67% of our fiscal year. I'll begin on Board Book Page 29 with our monthly summary report. You can see the total operating revenue for the month was $454,123, with 51% of that coming from evidence-based funding, our state funding, 17% coming from federal and state reimbursement, and 11% each coming from registration fees and property tax. The overall expenditures for the month were $2,349,251, with 70% towards salary and benefits, 10% towards operations and maintenance, and primarily a large portion of that is, was our liability insurance payment for the year, and then 7% toward special education tuition. Next, our monthly financial statements. You can see the summary of the fund balances shows that the district operating funds have an overall positive balance and this money will continue to be used to pay bills until the spring property tax collection arrives a little later this year in April and May. On the next page is the summary of revenues, which shows that the district has received 50.5% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This amount is significantly lower to this time last fiscal year, which was 65%. A small portion of that is due to the delay in the fall property tax collection, but also a large portion, a majority of that, is due to the spring property tax collection. Normally in February, we would start to receive some of that money from escrow accounts. So that's why there's that discrepancy. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 68% of the budgeted expenditures for the year. This amount is tracking a little higher than this time last fiscal year, which is around roughly 64%. As always, I've included a statement of revenue and expenditures for all of our board accounts for the month of February as well as our student activity accounts. And then lastly, I have two informational items for the board tonight. One of the projects that we are working on is replacing some of the stair treads in the building. There are three to four stairwells that need to have their stairwell treads replaced. Stairwell Q is by far the worst. If you go up those stairs, which are just down the hallway, you'll see a lot of the stairs are being held together with duct tape to prevent a tripping hazard. We're hopeful that we can complete that over spring break, but it depends on when we can get the materials in. The cost for that one is the most expensive at $17,000. The other ones, we're going to be able to just do partial replacements of half of the stairwells. So those will come in a little cheaper. And then lastly, for the board, I provided the annual budget calendar on Board Book Page 54. This is a calendar that I use to create the budget in collaboration with the Finance Advisory Council as well as Dr. Skinkis. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Kristin, I don't believe we received any questions on your report, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments here this evening? Nope. Seeing none. Dr. Freitas, how do you want to handle, since you have a number of reports under your agenda and you have the student advisor report?
Yeah, I'll say mine and our student advisors for last. I like to start with my assistant principal, if that's okay with the President. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kylie Lindquist and Ms. Beth Augustine for our staffing report.
Hi everyone.
Good evening.
How's everyone doing?
Great.
Good. So what you have in front of you is first our staffing summary that we provide each year once we go through the process of sectioning, once we hit February, our favorite time of year. So the summary sheet gives you an idea of not only the comparison between this current year's FTE and our projected FTE next year, but also tracks the changes. In the memo that I attached with the staffing summary, I did just some high-level summaries on what we're changing in each department. So I'm not going to read that all to you, but you can see where we're going up and down. For example, in Applied Arts and English, we are increasing FTE where then you will see in Fine Arts and Mathematics, we're lowering our FTE a little bit. The sectioning and staffing process is always an interesting puzzle to put together. It starts obviously at the projections that Kristin makes with regard to enrollment. And then there are several factors that we have to take into consideration as well as several areas that staff can straddle more than one content area, as well as certain courses can live in one content area as well as the other specific to courses like consumer economics. So when you see something like English increasing here, for example, we aren't going to be hiring in English because we have people who are dual-certified. So that AS numbers, for example, in Spanish, start to decrease, that teacher who is dual-certified in Spanish and in English pushes more than into English. One of the bigger impacts on what staffing looks like for us in terms of FTE is the impact that the new leadership structure has on what that looks like. Going from instructional coaches to division heads involves some tweaking of what those release periods look like. So while you can see that Dr. Smetana's projections in terms of where our students fall is going down, you can see the FTE for next year is going in a different way because we have several initiatives at play. Number one, accounting for that change in leadership structure. Another factor at play for us is the fact that we are growing so much in the applied arts area. We were able to hire for this year a 1.0 family and consumer science teacher who has done an outstanding job. And he was able to be here for a year while we have an outgoing retiree so he can sort of get the lay of the land and learn from her experience. We are excited that next year, we are going to still be able to hire another 1.0 family and consumer science teacher as we have a retirement in that department on top of the teaching that is going to be allocated to our division head for CTE. We are just really seeing students wanting to take specifically our culinary courses. That we are just kind of busting at the seams literally in terms of what our spaces are. But we're really starting to see our students find interest in those applied arts courses specifically. We also made a very concerted effort this year to look at our numbers in our social science courses and try to start to get those numbers getting a little bit closer to what our numbers are in our courses for math, for English, and for science. As we, I would say over the last, 10 years is probably a lot, but certainly over the last five or more years, we are starting to see social science really pick up some of the torch for things like literacy, reading, writing, support. And so you're starting to see those courses become so heavy in skills that reflect college and career readiness that we're looking to try to lower those a bit. And we're also looking to provide more intervention opportunities for our students. I made a note on the summary sheet about the FTE for '23, '24 may increase due to EL services that we would like to offer for our EL students. We just recently had a meeting about how we can increase services for our EL students by offering EL math and science courses to match their programming in reading and writing, in tutorial, and in social studies. There was a question submitted, as I detailed in my summary, talking a little bit about interventions. The interventions that I mentioned, whether it be a .2 or whether it be a .4, are built into what you are seeing right now. So the only thing that would impact that bottom line, which you see at the 108.6, would be adding that EL math and EL science programming so that we would be rounding out our day for our EL students specifically. I think I addressed, I think.
You did. I addressed the other questions, so we're.
Got it. Perfect.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
I don't know that you'll even be able to answer this because I know with the change in division heads and coming off of COVID and everything, I know one time we had discussed world languages and what we offered and you know, we were kind of trying to think out the box or see what we can offer. Do you have some kind of idea or vision where you think you want to bring that program as we start to ramp up again?
Yeah. This is one of the things I'm most excited about, actually. In the coming years, we know that world language is going to become a requirement for students, a two-year requirement coming down the pike. And so that has forced us to look at what are our offerings? So the next language that I think we're going to be able to bring in is American Sign Language. And I'm super, super excited about that. It's a place where we're able to see people get jobs, very, very successful jobs, supporting the deaf community and supporting, you know, as an interpreter. So we have a teacher who, post-COVID, had some staff members in the building that were interested in learning more about American Sign Language and who began taking master's courses in Sign Language. The state of Illinois does not have a certification specifically for American Sign Language. You can't go to school and say, I want to be a certified American Sign Language teacher. So districts have the capability of determining how they would gauge a person's readiness to be able to teach that course. Although everything that I've read says that once you get to a point where you've taken two or more master's classes, you're pretty much ready to teach an introductory-level American Sign Language course at the high school level. So it will not, it wouldn't be for next year, but looking two years out, that is something that we would like to bring in. We're also growing a little bit, I would say, not this coming year, but the following year in French. We have more students that are coming over from Hauser. We'll have two sections of French, one coming in where we've had one pretty routinely for the last handful of years. And then, you know, as we start to turn over, as some of our staff starts to move on, one thing that we've really been committed to in the past handful of years is looking for people who have dual certifications. Someone who can come in and maybe be able to teach a Spanish class, but they're also certified in Italian. Because we know that to build a language program, even if Dr. Skinkis said, sure, go ahead, hire a 1.0, let's say, Italian teacher, it would take a little bit to ramp that program up and fill out that person's schedule. But the first tangible, we have a person in our building that we're going to be able to push in is going to be American Sign Language.
Thank you for that question. And I'm kind of commingling your reports then because I was concerned about the drop in French. Is 96 the only feeder school that offers French? Okay, so it's a, it's a bit of a repeat of the orchestra scenario.
Same like the orchestra.
Yes. Right. So we have a, our feeder universe is smaller than it is for other languages.
Yes.
Later in the report, ladies, you have classes that are under 20 that need to be approved. Do you want to just touch on those real quick?
Let me just ask one last. And so with world languages, as you're wrapping that up, is there opportunity to even partner with Triton or some kind of dual language to also, you know?
So I did ask that question because all of us are experiencing the same thing at DVR on Monday when I was with the other stoops. I know Oak Park lost their Mandarin teacher. We're all experiencing a drop-off and then having trouble staffing full-time teachers. The only issue of trying to dual-credit with Triton is you have students that are, the requirements for two years, most of these students come in and take French one, Spanish one. So trying to send a freshman student who's just learning how to get acclimated to high school over to a college campus to take a language course may be a little intimidating. So we did discuss it. We're at the initial phases of discussing it to see if there's anything that we can work with Triton on so that maybe if it became, where a junior or senior is still needed to meet that language requirement. But that's about where that's at. It's at stage one of discussion.
You know, and just bring this up because, you know, Ellen Hurst has 27 languages spoken in their school. And, you know, they're speaking for, you know, Eastern European languages and they're having to bring in people in languages from India and, you know, Asia all over. So I think as we move forward in the future, we're going to have to do more with language. And, yeah, we're going to have to think out of the box. And like I said, I don't believe you'd have an answer now, but, you know, we're going to have to really start kind of looking at what's up.
Well, a lot will depend on too, what our feeder schools, if they're teaching it, if there's an interest in other language or, you know, it's hard to just say we're going to hire multiple full-time teachers if we don't know we have the numbers for it. That's kind of what slowly happened with German and slowly kind of what's happening with French, although we do see a little pickup coming next year.
Well, this is my plug for a unified district where we could start to encourage feeder schools to, I mean, Timothy Christian starts Spanish in Kittingard. And they, by, you know, high school, they're taking the test that Dr. Freitas told us, you know, they're fluent. Lot of schools around us, districts around us, Naperville has a building dedicated to dual language, Elmer's has a building dedicated to dual language. So we are a great school, but we are going to, you know, kind of fall behind our peers if we don't start to get some excitement from the feeder schools up.
So I, actually, one follow-up question before you get into the other classes and just to kind of focus on what our public comment mentioned. Just to clarify, a course offering that's not filled this year does not get removed from the curriculum guide.
Correct.
So the concern about French or the Bulldog Choir in this case, it stays in the curriculum options and people can select that for next year, assuming we can build some support and interest from fellow students and maybe her remarks will be taken to heart by some people.
Yes.
So classes under 20 that you're requesting later in the agenda for the board to approve. What page is that on?
205.
205. Mary Ann, if you can go to 205.
So the courses that you see that we're requesting approval for, the courses under 20, three of those seven are intervention courses, so our Tier 3 reading, our sophomore reading, and our pre-algebra courses, those are courses you're going to see every single year on this report. And to the, to the conversation that we were just having, you're often going to see our French courses on this sheet as well. We do combine Honors French IV and AP French together. She does both of those within one class to try to consolidate some of that FTE. And then the final one there, we are still down in our numbers in music, so we're asking for the board's permission to run the concert choir at 16, I believe. We asked for permission for that.
Chamber.
I'm sorry, chamber choir. I believe we asked for permission for that for this year as well. Underneath here, these are courses that, they are under the caps, but they are courses that we are only offering one period a day because of their specialized nature. So that's why those numbers typically are a little different. You know, AP Euro, these numbers are up in some cases. AP Euro is up, that's great, even though it's at 25. AP Chemistry is one of those courses that it just kind of depends on the year, how many students want to brave, you know, something like AP Chemistry. We always try to offer our AP courses or our kind of our capstone courses, like a repertory dance course and our AP Spanish literature course. Those are capstone courses, literature specifically for our heritage speakers. And then the classes that are over caps that you will see there, the three that are mentioned, those are very typical as well. Marching Band often is over 40. In the past, we have had to co-teach that in some capacity, but we're not at that point. And then Clarion and Rouser, our newspaper and our yearbook class. And those are classes where the instructors sort of say, like, bring the kids into the class and, you know, let us go over the caps a little bit for those.
So I have a question on this, not quite related to this table, but for the gym and wellness classes, right? You have a number of people who could opt out, juniors and seniors at a varsity sport. I'm wondering, not for this year, but maybe for next year, right? To look at what number of students actually take advantage of that opt-out? Because we say a class is at 40 for fall sports. What does that fall sport class actually run at once you have all the varsity opt-outs?
Yeah, so this morning, Kylie and I looked at a Google Doc and that's how we keep track of the waivers. Go ahead, you can say that.
Yeah, so for fall, we had 123 students total waive out of PE. For the winter sports, there were 79. And for the spring sports, there were 154. So in any particular season, you can look at potentially four or five students that would be potentially opting out.
Per class.
Okay.
But starting next year on that Google Doc, I'll make sure that we can keep specifically track of the period and the teacher so it's like an easy sort. Right now, it's, it was a little messy to figure it out, to say the least. But if we know that you want that information.
Well, I think what should be interesting is we're having this discussion about class size.
Absolutely.
Right? To me, that's, you know, it's a scheduled class size and then it's a real class, an actual class size once the sports get moving, so.
Correct. And then it's looking at like cheerleading, which is going to really keep a student out for the entire semester, where golf is only keeping a student out for a couple of months. So I'd want to put the parameters, a little timeline on that so we can really see how many students at one given time could be missing from that particular PE class. So yes, I will make sure that that happens.
Thank you.
On chamber choir, is there a requirement for a year or can they, can students take that any other four years?
We do allow them to take it for a semester. Oh, did you say all four years?
Yes, so from freshman through senior or do you have to wait to a particular year?
No, they can start in choir as a freshman and continue taking choir.
Is chamber an entry-level choir, I think is the question?
Yes.
Okay.
But seniors could take it as well?
Yes.
Yes, if I wanted to take a choir class as a senior, I could take chamber, correct?
Yes.
I was just wondering, sometimes we've had classes that you couldn't access until you were an upperclassman and so then that automatically kind of restrained how many students could take it.
Yeah.
Any other questions on staffing or class sizes? We'll vote on the class, the approval of the classes under 20 next, later in the agenda? Okay, thank you. Who's next? Oh, wait, go ahead.
Well, we're going to move on to MTSS information, but maybe we could touch on dual enrollment and dual credit.
That'd be great, Beth. Go ahead.
Word update. So really great news, dual enrollment for next year. We really pushed that in pre-registration meetings. The counselors really pushed the offering at Triton. And so these are students that would take class in the morning at Triton and then would come back to RV for classes in the afternoon. So the good news is we have a student will be participating in the computer information system program, three for criminal justice, four for health, and five for welding. Of all of the schools in DVR, we were the second highest on, with students participating for next year, which is really exciting. And I know the students are really excited about that, so now we're going to start getting them registered at Triton and this is going to be a work in progress and learning curve. But, yeah, it's really exciting. And then dual.
So dual credit-wise, we just got, on Monday, we just received back a whole list of Triton feedback with regards to instructors meeting the requirements for courses like studio music production, PE, strength and conditioning at Triton, foundations of exercise at Triton, a potential dual-credit offering in biology. These are all people that are in the next steps portion where Triton has reviewed their transcripts once they gave me permission to send them and they say like, yes, they meet the requirements, we need to start talking about what this looks like. From that, we also have some of our AP courses in English that are going to become dual-credit through Loyola University, which is typically where we go with our AP courses. We're going to try again for Spanish literature. It's something that we've tried in the past and it hasn't necessarily worked, but we're up for trying it again and seeing what happens. Also, David Weishaar, who is in our Applied Arts Department, is approved for three of his classes next year to be dual-credit that weren't dual-credit before. And he has in process kind of talks with Triton for two potential more dual-credit offerings. Patty Sarkady has two of her classes that are approved already, dual-credit offerings, so those students will receive dual-credit next year. And we also had Chef Manny from Triton come out and take a look at our kitchen and talk about what upgrades we need to make to our kitchen and our spaces and all of that stuff because our current new foods teacher, Grant Lewis, as well as our recommended new hire, both have the industry credentials to be able to offer their foods classes as dual-credit. So super exciting.
It's big growth, guys.
Opportunities.
That's excellent. That's really exciting because students are registered in Triton as high school students, so it makes that transition. When you graduate, you're in, you know, it's just smooth.
Yeah. And you get all the resources. Any of our students who have the dual-credit opportunities through Loyola, I mean, they get a Loyola ID, they can go on their campus and use their libraries and their technology and all of that. I mean, the opportunities that it opens for kids is really incredible.
If I may make a suggestion, with the uptick in students enrolled in dual-credit and dual enrollment, I would highly urge you all to ask parents to come in for a meeting, to sign off on the fact that their students are enrolled in a dual-credit and dual enrollment and what that means for their academic progress as well as the negative repercussions a low grade could have on their financial aid. And I'm speaking from the mother of a freshman who was enrolled in a dual-credit class. And I didn't find out it was a dual-credit class until I sat in the, like, second or third week, "Welcome back." And I was like, oh my goodness, here we go. Right? And I was telling my son, that's the one class you can't mess up on because that's, that's your transcript for high school or for college, right? You're establishing your transcript for college. So I would just urge, just to make it, it's great, I love all of. I love all of these, hearing all of these classes. As a Triton College employee, I'm in career services. Send all your students over to me, we'll work on resumes. But there's more, you know, more to it than just, oh, great, now they're dual credited, dual enrollment, especially the dual credit, just because they're going to be on campus and it's a whole other, it's a whole other ballgame. Just, let's set them up.
Yeah. Absolutely.
For a smooth semester.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for that update. That's very informative. MTSS?
Okay, so I will start.
Kevin Baldas joining you.
Yeah, we'd like to introduce our director of special education, Mr. Kevin Baldas, who will be a co-presenter.
Good evening.
Okay, so we are here to give you an update on MTSS and interventions. And I will share a little bit of what's going on with Panorama, which has just been an incredible resource, support tool for student services this year. We used it as a user-friendly, easy place to store student data and be able to review this data consistently within small teams and teachers and case managers. And also, it was our space and our place to hold SEL survey data. A shift from last year where we didn't, it wasn't as accessible in the tool that we used previously. But I provided with you with some numbers, some feedback on our sophomores, juniors, and seniors that took the survey twice so that you could kind of see where we were having some concerns with that population. I think the good news is our students are reporting that they have supportive relationships. They have teachers and parents and adults in their life that they can seek out and know that they will be there to support them. And also that they are feeling strong with self-management. But the two areas that we did see could, needed some growth were challenging feelings and emotional regulations. And so based on the data from those surveys, it was able to take students that were all at Tier One and move them up to Tier Two, which should typically be about 15% of your student population that are needing a Tier Two intervention. And the social workers and psychs were able to build their groups out of those students and offer them the opportunity to participate in a group. In addition to that, it was an opportunity to do one-on-one check-ins with students that we saw might need some additional support and resources. And then additional groups were built, grief group, healthy relationships, and social skills group based on that, the feedback from those surveys. Our freshmen were administered a survey in January, and I'll get to why we only did the one in January. But they too, the data was similar in that they had strong areas in relationship building and self-management, but continued to kind of work on the social awareness and emotional regulation. Again, you can see all the percentages. The reason we only administered that survey in January was that in the fall, all of our freshmen, I think 94% participated in the SOS survey, which is connected to Alyssa's mission. And it's a non-for-profit organization where they go into schools and provide students with a pre-test and then a lesson where students can recognize signs of distress and potential harm to self and then also to their peers and really know how to be a bystander and want to step up and report a concern. So the students received a pre-test, then a lesson that was administered by the psychs, social workers, and counselors. And then it was followed up by a post-test. The good news was that our average where students were scoring that they knew the signs was 82%, which is falling in that Tier One, 80%. And then on the post-test, it rose to 89, showing that increase that there was, showing those lessons, something, students actually received something from it. There was a gain. And then the students that identified, the thing that I found really amazing is that there was someone from Alyssa's mission there scoring these very quickly. And then immediately if there was a student that had a concern, we were going and talking to that student and assessing that student and then following up with parents, getting outside resources. It was like on the spot, seeing who is our freshman class? How mentally healthy are they? And I think, are they? And I think what we saw was that for the most part, we were in good shape. Based on so many of schools having done this screener, the people from Alyssa's mission had so much data to say, you guys are in good shape. And then I just provided our weekly problem solving. These are teams set up of social workers, psychs, and school counselors. And we've had 81 referrals and just kind of reporting on interventions. We're using Panorama to really help us determine who are those referrals. And it's usually students who are, have a combination of maybe attendance issues, some academic issues, and also red flags. So the counselors are monitoring the Panorama data. And then they're bringing students to referral, the referral process. Our tapestry program is going extremely well. That's our connection with West 40. We have two advocates in the building. And they have a full caseload each, and we now have 64 students participating in that program. And then just a little information of having over the course of the year, 21 students hospitalized, which is another opportunity to use Panorama in ensuring that when students come back, we can really monitor those students, that they're getting back on track with social-emotional support in addition to the academic support that they need.
21 students hospitalized for social-emotional?
It could be also for.
Medical?
Yeah, it could also be for medical.
Okay.
Yes, it's not just social.
Good question, thank you.
Yes, not just social-emotional.
So there's, a flyer came out through Brookfield for the loft in Eight Corners. Is that a program or a resource that you're using or recommending?
I think the team was there for the opening.
It was in the Friday, yeah, we were part of the help and design.
We've actually been part of the process since the very beginning. We have a group of students, RV students, who have participated in naming the loft and coming up with the paint colors, the carpet, the aesthetics of the loft, coming up with ideas for groups. We took the Student Services team on the first institute day in October to see it before it was actually finished. We are promoting it. It's going to be an incredible resource. I'm happy to come back at another time. I know this is a long meeting to even give you more details in how we're utilizing it, but it's going to be an incredible resource for our teams.
Yeah, that email to all staff and all today from the social workers.
Mm-hmm.
That's exciting. Quick question, what was the response rate on the SEL survey?
Yes, for the, so it was 83 for the, for the freshmen.
For the freshmen.
And then I noticed that. So it was 79 in the fall and 81 in the one that was taken in February.
Thank you. I was just trying to do a comparison from.
Yeah.
Academic interventions?
From the academic side, I went through and kind of gave you a sort of brief summary of where most of our interventions live within our building. And if you look kind of across the board, the majority of our academic interventions have typically, typically occurred at the freshman level. We have freshman reading, we have freshman extended algebra, things of that nature. And so routinely, we are looking for ways that we can support students and, you know, help get them back on track in their classes and get them on track for college and career readiness. So this year, we were able to use funds that the district set aside for us to pay teachers to deliver class period interventions. So opportunities for us to essentially go and scoop up kids in their access points, which might be a study hall or an academic support. In some cases, it might be a wellness class or another elective class, and bring those kids in for intervention, whether it be for interventions within math or whether it be interventions within reading or literacy skills. We have in the past few years adopted the STAR assessment system. And one of the great things about Panorama and how it pairs with STAR is that I can go in and not just take a look at which students are not reaching benchmark according to STAR in English and math at the ninth through 11th grade level, but I can compare that in one shot with how their coursework is going. So I can take a look at a student and see, okay, this student is like really at the very bottom level of STAR, which would say that they need immediate intervention, but their grades are As and Bs. So now I have to ask the question of whether or not that student took that test seriously. And right, we talk about communicating the purpose for the test and students understanding that this is something that gets you flagged for an intervention. We've attacked the interventions this year with that funding from the district in two different ways for math and English. And we were trying to do it the same for a while while we tried to wrap our heads around all of these students that could benefit from intervention. And what we really ended up realizing is that it was much more efficient for us to scoop kids and bring them in in a pull-out system for math because oftentimes delivering a math intervention, having that on top of, or that additional practice on top of what students have already learned, is really what kind of propels them to the next level. Whereas on the English side, we went a little bit of a different route. When someone is deficient in reading comprehension, it's a very different story of having them practice, practice, practice reading comprehension versus practice, practice, practice fractions or adding and multiplying. So what we did on the English side with that funds is we used the funds to have our teachers create some intervention materials, some formative assessments, and some activities that all English teachers could deliver on a more Tier One basis within their classroom to really support all skills. Because we know that we're not going to harm anyone, right? And it's a lot easier to sneak an intervention in, in English than it is in math. So that's how we took that ability to give us kind of some interventions this year and work them in, even though they weren't necessarily scheduled into the school day for those sophomores and juniors that we're not hitting anymore, who maybe are used to a lot of intervention at the freshman level. And then that leads us to some intervention planning that we've been doing this year for next year and looking at, and I mentioned this with the staffing summary, looking at allocating some additional FTE to intervention in reading and mathematics beyond the freshman level so that we can address kind of what they call that sophomore slump that students get into when they get into the sophomore level because they were supported, 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 and then all of a sudden they're on their own. And kind of ease those students in, go and get them, find out, you know, what is it that we're really missing? So we have one of our school psychologists, Pushba Winbusch, right now, looking at current freshmen. And who are those freshmen that are consistently under benchmark and their grades are reflective? And so we can cross-reference those students and target them for interventions for next year.
Thanks, Kylie. Any questions from the board? Kevin, want to provide a special education update?
Yes, so the top of the first page of my report, it's just some data of students within our program right now. At the end of each of those bullet points are some percentages as well, just from the difference from last school year. Currently, as of last Thursday, when I finished this report, we had 229 students receiving special ed services within some point within our school building and as well as outplaced. That number does fluctuate up and down. We do have kids that do exit special ed. We do have kids that are identified. Right now, we have five additional students that are currently going through initial evaluations for special education for different reasons, from maybe struggling academically, socially, emotionally, like it's really across the different possibilities of qualifying for special ed.
Does that include the students that go up to age 22?
Yes, absolutely. Yep. And there are 18 of those right now that are in our transition program, which is down 14% from last year. We do have, right, currently, again, this number does change, we have 28 students out of that 229 that are outplaced at different educational settings from residential to LRB or to other therapeutic day schooling, depending on their needs that they need to have addressed that isn't being able to be met here at RV.
So that's obviously a significant increase over last year. And is this the report where you talk about projections for next year? Or am I confusing my special education reports?
You are accurate. So like last year, those students were down. We had a lot of students that aged out last year. And also, or took their diplomas after four years of being in special education. So that, we were down significantly last year. And this is where we're kind of back up to where we had been previous, in previous years.
Okay.
But yes, when I looked at that data, it's off 33%.
Right, that jumped off the page. Well, I wonder if there's maybe more than a year over a year? We might need like a three-year trend review, just as the board's looking at it. That 33 does jump off, the minus 14 jumps off, they're not necessarily.
But it's seven students, right? I mean, it's a seven-student increase, which is just a.
Well, I didn't do the math in my head.
I'm just saying it's.
Okay.
I do have all that data and information. Definitely can share that.
It just would help to say, like, it was a seven-student increase. Because if you get two or three freshman students coming in.
With a small subset, a small number pops it up.
I mean, my concern is more big picture. Is this something we need to be anticipating and planning for for the next three or four years? Or is this?
It's something I keep in communication with the feeder programs. We have kids that, I do know them three, four years out, that are already, typically, those kids are receiving some intensive programming right now. Right now, it's pretty consistent. There's not a huge spike like it projects right now.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
Absolutely.
Just one last, so when we think of special education, we're thinking of IEP and 504s also? Or no?
No, 504s are not included.
So 504s are mine.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
504s are not considered special education.
We have had a couple of kids move from 504s to IEPs this school year, but.
504s live in Student Services, not special ed.
Just some staffing numbers, 13.4 FTE when it comes to special education teachers. They are also dual with case managers, two transition specialists, and then 19 paraprofessionals and one program nurse. That program nurse typically works with, the next with our programming, I did, it's kind of a flow chart from our most intensive program that we have within our building moving up to the, I'd say, next level of intensity where you'll notice that there's a lot more of related service providers during kids that are in our life skills program. Our program nurse typically works with those kids. There's a lot of, you know, young people with some medical needs that we have to address during their school days, if it's feeding or whatever things that we might need to do that are medically identified to allow them to be in our building, that we want to make sure that we support them when they're here. Those students that are in our life skills program do receive a completion, a certification, certificate of completion, sorry, which is different than a diploma. And many of the kids that are in our life skills program do then go on to our transition program as well, which you mentioned earlier, that goes on to the school year in which they turn 22 years of age. We do have some kids that do fall into both programs, that core program, they might have a couple of classes in the classroom, not in the self-contained program, like life skills is, but we do have some kids. And that's where that individual programming falls for some of our kids. Then we follow up into study skills, or most of the students that are in study skills, that is run seven periods a day, supported by special education teachers that have students that are typically qualified for special ed within specific learning disability, where they're getting interventions with math, English. Often, we do a lot of our transition supports with those individuals. And they're planning for post-high school outcomes as well. And a huge push-in for executive functioning supports as well. Pride is also a four-class period a day. Many of those students that we have in Pride are identified with social-emotional disabilities that need that connection within our school building to have some, you know, two case managers that process with them. A lot of, this year has been more focused on helping them get through their school days. A lot of the students that we have in our program are kids that are struggling with attendance for whatever reason at home. Just, I try to go into explanation of all the, there are just so many different factors in why we're trying to get them to come to school and be that connection with them of trying to get them to come to school and support them. The next one's our social thinking program, mainly the students with that fall in our neurodiverse students, previously students that fall within the autism spectrum. Ms. Delzai does a great job with those individual students working with executive functioning, again, how to function in school. Many of those kids are, you know, going through just interpersonal communication struggles, how to maintain, most of them are in general education classes, and this is their only special education course that's our check-in point. Again, executive functioning is a major topic in how they do that program and work with those kids in that program. Then the next up level of intervention that we have in the building is our co-teaching model, which are all general education classes that are supported through every department within our building by a special education teacher and a general education teacher coming together. Often, some of those classes will also have peer supports in there as well to help, not necessarily instruction, but to help maintain. not necessarily instruction, but to help maintain academic levels assigned to certain groups within the classroom, it gives them more opportunity to have more face time with an adult that can guide them through the curriculum that they're doing in those classrooms. The next program is the transition program, students that qualify for transition program, or students that have completed a four-year degree, they hold on to the diploma, but they do technically graduate, and then go into, typically, some of our students are enrolled and taking classes at Triton, or on the job training. We have job coaches that go to the community, our two transition specialists go out in our community, find businesses, find opportunities where they can place our kids, and they know them to a level of knowing what jobs, what places, what hours, and then they also organize the transportation of getting those kids to, I say, actually, young adults, really, to and from their job, some go to work, and then they go to Triton as well. So our transition specialists will go into Triton to be with them, kind of go through how the classes are going, and try to keep them up, and help them find the supports in that environment, as well as like our job coaches that do go into the community with kids. And they do task analysis of jobs, what the employers are expecting of them, and it really is that next level of real-world expectations, the jobs, and the employers do hold these kids to a high expectation, they have, you know, if things don't go well, they, you know, they'll have sit downs and meetings about how, you know, the job could be performed better, right, it's on-the-job feedback. And we have some kids that are much more independent, that they can kind of just manage how they're doing from a distance, and just communications through phone calls or emails. And those kids are, again, I'm sorry, young adults, typically can be with us up until the end of that year of school where they turn 22. And then ESY is another intervention that we have, typically for students that fall in the life skills program and/or core, that the IEP team has determined that if they were to be home all summer, they would have risk of regression of skills that they learned during the school year. So to offset that possibility, to keep them in the building, they do a lot of community-based outings, but also do some work and complete tasks to keep them from losing everything they lost, or anything they gained during that school year, so that when they come back, to maintain and complete progress and growth. And then the last program that we have in, with LT is through LADZI, which is LRB Academy. And those are our students that typically go to RB, our students that have gone through the MTSS process, have gone through this process of special ed, have been in our building and had multiple, multiple types of interventions with staff, related service personnel, that just despite those implementations of supports, just aren't successful here, and then go to that school setting, which is, the best part's in our community. Some of our kids that are outplaced travel quite far distance, and this is a benefit of them being within our community, they, hopefully, at some point, when they meet the exit criteria, when they get the interventions, the small class sizes, really one-on-one, family therapy, individual, in-the-moment therapy, social work, that then can get it point to a level where they can be recommended to come back to RB at some point and go back mainstream. Typically, that process happens a couple of class basis, I don't think it'd be appropriate to take a student from a small setting like that and put them right into a building of 1,600 kids, just setting them up. And so if we try a couple of classes, take a semester, see how that goes, you know, I meet frequently with the program principal and the professionals there to say, I think we need some more time, or, yeah, they're ready to return, and let's try a full-time after the, after the couple of classes per day, AM or PM, so, that was a lot, but...
That was really comprehensive, thank you.
Where is that facility located?
It's in the Grange...
Formerly St. Louis.
Yep.
Okay.
So when that school closed, the LADZI purchased it, and so we have LRB on one floor, and then they do some other programming for some of the grammar school age kids.
So actually in the neighborhood?
Yes. And the great thing about that is there was a lot of services between the high schools, the cooperative primarily is focused a lot on K-8, and so this LRB Academy having the ability to have an off-site location for students that need outplacement, but could be close enough to LT or RB to come back and participate in extracurriculars, or as they continue to develop their skills, come back for maybe one or two classes during a regular school day, and close transportation.
Would this be a comparison of Menta, you know, Park, LRB, or slightly different?
It's different, and typically, students that are school refusal, attendance issues, more social-emotional components, will go to LRB, we're Menta, typically will have a different type of student that will attend Menta.
Yes.
But it's still a therapeutic setting with social workers.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you, Beth, thank you, Kylie.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Lots of information tonight.
You gotta stay for your colleagues now and support them like they support you.
Now, we'd like to introduce our Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, Mr. Dave Mannan, who'll go over our student handbook.
Good evening.
Hello.
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 All right, so this is our annual, it's a first read of the handbook for the 23-24 school year, exciting times, there's not a lot of changes this year, but more enhancements, I should say. So we're just going to provide you a first read of the handbook. Prior to this meeting, this report, the deans and I met with a group of senior leaders that attend various activities on campus, we sent surveys out to our staff, our students' parents, then held conversations within our Culture and Climate Committee, and had a meeting with our board member, Mr. Welch, as well. So the following information in this report is some major changes, and then some highlighted items that we would like to include for next year. The first category is just some corrected language with the outset of the divisional chairs, next year, they're going to oversee the approval and related approvals and review process of the summative and final examinations for students. So just really striking out instructional chair piece of it, and then replacing that with the divisionals, it's not a procedural change, if any, it's just more assigning that responsibility over to the divisionals. In addition, new language was added that indicates students will need administrative approval to take final examinations early and/or outside of the classroom setting. This is new language that's added, I would caution the, I don't know, many or whatever we have that come in, in regards to, like, where are they taking those final exams, how are we taking those final exams? It's going to be on an approval process that's related to, like, in a family emergency, or, you know, a vital meeting that they can't miss, or something like that. If we're just saying, you know, we're going to have parents come in, say, we're taking vacation early, I want to have my kid take that final examination, that's not going to be one that we're going to approve. But that'll go through Kylie's office and the divisional chairs on that approval process. The second category is related to our dress code policy, this recommendation came actually from our Culture and Climate, and talking to some of the staff members. To limit distractions and any irregularities within a testing environment, students will not be allowed to wear or bring any items such as like a backpack, hat, hoods, ear pod, or headphone devices, phones, iPhones, electronic devices, or anything along those lines into our final examination or state testing environments. So that's a little bit of a change, and as the state assessments go more electronic, we really want to make sure that that's a secure environment that students are taking their tests within. And so those hats could be a distraction, it could also be a place for them to hide the answers, just a lot of different things, we just want to make sure that we have a secure facility, and a safe facility for our students to take those state assessments. The next section includes resources outlined through FACE Law. FACE Law was adopted by the state in '21, it regards the expanded definition of grooming beyond just electronic communication, so that would be in-person in our third-party meetings. And what was kind of directed towards the Illinois State Board of Education was to make sure we have some type of portal for parents to go to with resources and links if students are, you know, suffering from, or have experienced sexual abuse. And so that portal was, just went live recently, so we're going to take that link and put it into our handbook that's already defined under our board policy and under FACE Law. So that information's there, we're just adding more resources for parents, and that'll be included next year. The next section pertains to the first page of the handbook, we're trying to get innovative and creative with our handbook and concise, and so we want to make sure that when students open our handbook, they can go to a quick QR link, hit it, and then find what they need, instead of going thumbing through or searching online where these things are at. So the last two years, we've added quick links for attendance, for dress code, for the staff directory, things like that, we're going to add more QR codes, and we'll just like itemize it within the first page. I know there was a question pertaining to that, and we, if you look at our website under the student handbook, we put that at the front, so when you go to our web page now for the handbook, that like is blaring right at families or students, so they can hit that with their phone, or what have you, and get to whatever link or resources that they want. So a lot of those resources are going to pertain to like procedural things, like drop off, pickups, parking, attendance, things of that nature, and so that'll really help, I think, our students and our families as well, and guide them to a place where they can go and get access to whatever they need, and not have to dig through an expansive website full of procedures, so...
Dave, there is one way about, there's a question about QR codes on the website?
Thank you for responding to that.
Okay, so just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's just, it's trying to make it more visual, and we actually reached out to the publisher, and through our, and through our survey that we had sent out, asking students, you actually utilized this, you utilized the handbook, utilized the features of it, and then reaching out to our publisher, they're saying that more schools are looking to get like a more, like, creative side of things now that students are connected, let's utilize that, you know, and put that stuff into our handbook. So I think we're kind of in the front with some of those items, and we'll continue to talk to students and survey them and see what will work best. But our kids do use them, and use them for not only just looking for the handbook, you know, policies, procedures, but for just your agendas for each day, like a planner. So that's been really successful, and we hand those out during residency. And the last thing on this report is just added language related to early release, students will need to obtain a pass from the welcome, or from the attendance office, and then sign out the welcome center to leave the building, it's a safety-related issue, we want to make sure that we have that call in before releasing that student out. We do that anyway, but it's more or less going to highlight that students actually have to calm down, because we've been doing a lot of manpower running passes left and right, so this would shore up language in regards to the parents, just come, have their kids calm down to get that attendance pass before they sign out.
So is our handbook going to be available in Spanish also?
I believe there's a link, I got to look at mine, though, so I will come back with that at the second read, but, yes.
Because I think, maybe we can ask Paulina if you don't mind, we keep making you speak for everybody, but just speaking with more Latino families, and Berwin, and Cisro were at my home churches, and even Nohar's, huge Latino community, it seems like that would be valuable for parents to be able to, every school I know that's been successful, the parents always tell me that they were given papers in Spanish for them, so that they knew and didn't have to rely on the kids to tell them, because they didn't always, parents told me, they didn't always get the full truth.
So I don't think we'd be giving out parents a handbook.
No, but there should have access.
So what I suggested is at registration days, take a sheet of paper, put all these QR codes on it, hand it to the parents, so now the parents have access to the handbook.
In Spanish.
In Spanish or English, and so...
Or any other language it might be.
Once the handbook goes to the student in the backpack, the parents kind of lose control of the QR code, so I just suggested a single piece of paper that you give out at registration and just say...
A quick guide, yeah.
A quick QR code away from reading whatever you need to do.
Or links on the website, or a link to the handbook on the website, because QR codes are not always...
We have a link on the website for the handbook, and I believe you also can translate our website into an alternate language.
First read?
First read.
Anything else for the board? Consent agenda item, unless the board identifies anything, is everybody okay with consent agenda?
Well, to put this on a consent agenda?
For next meeting.
For April.
Okay, but we can come back, and if we need to take it off, we can.
Yes.
Yeah.
There were no questions submitted this time, so I'm...
No, but given, like you said in the beginning of the meeting, given the short turnaround, I skimmed this, but I think I want to go back and look a little bit deeper.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Now, we'd like to invite our Assistant Principal for Athletics, Mr. Brendan Curtin, to give our winter summary report. Brendan?
Last but not least.
Again, everyone, the 2022-23 winter athletic season was successful for all of our winter athletic teams. Some of the highlights included, as we recognized earlier tonight, one athlete earning honorable mention status for the exclusive IHSA All-Academic Team, first time in a long time that has happened, one athlete earning second-team All-State honors, we had three teams win a conference championship this past winter, boys' basketball, cheerleading, and boys' wrestling. And again, as recognized earlier tonight, 20 athletes competed in the state series finals in their respective sports. Many of these athletes are returning next year, and we had over 70 winter athletes earn All-Academic All-Conference. Just to give you a quick highlight on each team, our girls' basketball team took on a powerhouse in a regional semifinal game against Hinsdale Central, took them down to the wire, it illustrated to me that they were playing their best basketball at the end of the season, which is very encouraging. Our cheerleading program is under new leadership with Coach Tricia Schroeder, and our lower levels are in great shape there, so the future looks bright. Girls' gymnastics took first place in our own invitational, several other invitationals, they had a top-three finish, and again, with the state qualifier. Our Poms team has many talented dancers, many of those are freshmen or underclassmen, if you will, that will be returning in the future. Boys' basketball had 26 wins this year, which was the second-most in program history. Our boys' swim team, they returned a ton of talent from a great team, they just barely missed advancing a couple relay teams by a fraction of a second to sectional play, so very encouraging. And then, boys' wrestling, boys' and girls' wrestling, great season, the boys were first in the Metro Suburban Conference, we had just under 90 wrestlers participate, took second place in a very competitive regional tournament. So again, a successful season for all our athletic teams. In terms of athletic participation and pay-to-play, we experienced a greater than 5% increase in athletic participation this past season. Most of our winter sports remained relatively the same, however, we saw a noticeable increase of 11 student athletes within our wrestling program. It's also worth mentioning that our fees collected have increased compared to last year, while the number of waived student athletes declined by 10 compared to last year. So again, that's just a little snapshot of the winter season, I'm open to any questions that you might have.
How's lacrosse doing?
I'm sorry?
Is our lacrosse taking off?
Lacrosse, it is, I think our girls' program is knocking on the door, having two levels. The boys' program does have two levels, JV and varsity, so we're very excited about, I think this is year five maybe, for the lacrosse program, so very excited.
Those are strong students, I see them practicing at night in the snow.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Curtin?
Sounds like a solid program going on.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
APs, now's the time to run for the door.
It's kind of you all to stay together. Bye-bye, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. Student advisors?
Student advisors?
Or Dr. Freitas, your choice there.
Ladies, please.
Good evening, everyone, just a reminder from our last meeting, seniors who have already committed to university may need to submit mid-year transcripts, which they can receive through our student services office and their counselor. And as I said last time, Ms. Engelhardt sends out a mid-year transcript and an end-of-the-year transcript email that you just fill out and it goes straight to your counselor. Entering the last quarter of school, I encourage all students to keep up with their grades and homework, and to end the year on a high note. And to my fellow seniors, enjoy every second of your senior year, because it's almost coming to an end. Moving on to school culture, the college planning tips program for juniors is March 15th at 7:00 PM here at RB. And for activities and athletics, there is a boys' lacrosse opening match, March 15th at 7:00 PM, it's a home game. There's a girls' lacrosse opening match, March 16th at 5:30 PM at home. There's a girls' soccer opening match, March 14th at Revis Invite. And then, for girls' track and field, we have a meet on March 18th at Ridge Township, with a field event starting at 9:00 AM.
Good evening, everyone, I start my report today with another reminder to seniors to complete any scholarships that are still open, because many scholarships end up unawarded because no one even applies, so try your best and do not leave it. So try your best and do not leave it to the last minute. School culture and operation this month is National Women's History Month, and the Girl Love Club has organized a fundraiser and delivered announcements over the loudspeaker in the mornings and afternoons to celebrate and continue advocating for women's rights. The theater department put on the musical Grease from March 2nd to the 5th, and it was a great performance. I went on the last day, and I showed up at 1:30, and the line was already really long with families and friends, although the show didn't start until 2:00. And that day, there were several technical difficulties because of a power outage that happened the night before in Brookfield. But despite the challenges, the sound and the lighting crew found a way to make it all work. So I encourage all students to keep supporting our theater department. The shows are always incredible. Moving on to activities and athletics, varsity baseball is having their opening game on Thursday, March 18th at 11:00 AM at Eller. Varsity softball had their opening game today at 4:30 at Veterans Park, and varsity badminton had their opening match today at 4:30 at Arco. Good luck to all athletes as the spring season kicks off.
Thank you very much.
All right, Dr. Freitas. Do you want to stand or sit? There's a lot of squats.
Our current freshman on track rate as a 39 is 98%. In our Five Essentials survey, I checked it this morning, we're actually at 94%. I mean, there's like two, three more hits and we meet our goals, so I'm excited. And I want to thank all the staff, all the students for participating in this, you know, their opinions matter to us, and that's how we help grow our school. But we are a few students away from reaching 95%. Under school culture and operations, this week we have the Illinois Science Assessment is a junior's only exam, and juniors are to bring their their Chromebooks fully charged. The Illinois Regional College Fairs will host an event at Hinsdale South High School, open to the public Thursday, March 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Our Trades and Career Fair is Friday, March 17th during second and third period in the East Gym. We have a music sponsors meeting Monday, March 20, 7:00 to 8:00 PM. Coffee with the principal Wednesday, March 22nd from 9:00 to 10:00 AM in the auditorium. Our spring break is at the end of the month, March 27th through the 31st. We have a P T O meeting Monday, April 10th from 7:00 to 8:00 PM in the staff cafeteria. Next month, we have a S A T and P S A T testing, which will begin on Wednesday, April 12th at 8:00 AM. The S A T will be taken by the juniors in the math and English hallways. The P S A T 10 sophomores will be taken in the fieldhouse, and the P S A T 8, 9 freshmen will be taken in the East Gym. The R B H S P T O Community Service Day will be Saturday, April 19th at 9:00 AM. For students interested, visit our website and click on the R B H S P T O Community Service Day announcement, click on the form, or scan the Q R code. On the activities and athletics, you know, I want to give a big shout out to our Director of Grease, Ms. Stanky, and our Assistant Director, Ms. Johnson. It was a fabulous show, you know, those $10, $15 tickets were really worth $100 to $200. I mean, that's how great, you know, the show was. And I want to give a shout out to all the students involved, all the tech crew, everybody and all the community for supporting because I want to say almost every day or every other day, the show was sold out. And last but not least, R B Got Talent auditions will happen, you know, in a few weeks from 3:30 to 4:30 PM. And that concludes my principal's report.
Dr. Freitas, just check for future for that service day because I thought April 19th was a Wednesday. It's 15th. Okay, but you have, you have 19th on the report, so it's April 15th.
Excuse me, April 15th.
Okay. Just so we don't, when you send out your update to families. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Freitas?
I will second the line to get into Grease.
It was a big line.
On Friday, I barely made it. I was scrounged in the last seat and separated from my group, but it was great, so.
Yeah, it was good all four nights. The turnout, all four nights was excellent.
It's been a while since it's been that full.
Yeah, with the pandemic and everything, it was excellent. Usually I hike up in the, up in the balcony, and there are two seats left for me and my daughter. It was full.
We tried to go to the balcony, and they're like, turn back around.
Thank you very much. Any more comments, questions? Moving on from the reports to the consent agenda, we can start taking some action here. Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meeting held on February 14th and 28th, 2023, open and closed. Student registration fees, 2023, 2024 school year. Quest food service contract extension. I H S A membership for the 2023, 2024 school year as presented in the March 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on any of these matters, or can we proceed as consent vote? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Yes. Old business, the life safety items, capital improvement, sustainability. I don't believe we have anything this evening.
No, just a brief update. We did our first construction meeting, in-person construction meeting for the summer HVAC project. We're slated to start May 30th and be punchless complete. The tentative date is August 11th, but as I told the construction, the subcontractors today, students out, will be in the caf on Tuesday, August 15th, ready for fries and lunch, so. May 30th to August 11th, where it's going to be cracking the whip.
Fries, lunch, and a latte.
Yes.
Vending machine contract renewal.
There are no additional questions submitted, and Dr. Smetan, anything you need to add to this?
This is a final contract language. It's not on, it wasn't on the consent agenda because we had to pull out the last board meetings. We were waiting to hear back from the company, but what's included in the board packet is the final contract language.
Okay. Any questions, or should we move on with this? Go ahead, Ms. Gasko. Thanks.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, approves the vending machine contract with Compass Group USA Incorporated through its canteen division as presented in the March 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
A second from Mr. Welch. We do need a roll call.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Mr. Ruska?
Yes.
Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Salus?
Yes. Student handbook. We don't want to approve this this evening. This was a first read.
Right, we skipped the B Staffing Summary.
Oh, I apologize. Staffing Summary, Minimum Course Enrollment Approval.
Yes, so as Kylie and Ms., I should say, as Ms. Lindquist and Ms. Augustine presented tonight, these are the courses, the main courses are the ones listed for being approved for being under the cap, under, under 20 for board approval. I know there were a lot of reports tonight, but you know, this is kind of like the turning point now of our planning year, so after tonight with the Staffing Summary board approving that, as we head into April, then we start working on budgeting and budgeting for the programming and interventions and staffing and all those things. So I thought you received some good information tonight, but just it kind of finds the same pattern each year where March is our most detailed meeting, so you have an idea of what we're working on this spring and summer for the next school year.
Shouldn't this be a roll call because it's a kind of a cost thing, no? It says all in favor underneath the motion.
Well, I think it's it's an adherence of our board policy to approve or not approve individual classes below the cap. We can do it as a roll call if you prefer.
Well, I'm just thinking, it's kind of a, you know, financial also, so.
I mean, everything ultimately has a
Everything.
Financial impact. I don't disagree with you, but we can do it as a, as a roll call for sure. Ms. Gasko, would you read the? Sure. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, approves in accordance with District Policy 6:31, minimum course enrollment, the list of courses for the 2023, 2024 school year with projected enrollment below 20 students based on the current student enrollment data as presented in the March 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Welch, and per Ms. Ruska's request, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Slapp?
Yes.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Salus?
Yes. First read for student handbook.
No action tonight. I'll put this on the consent unless we receive questions requesting it to be removed from the consent.
No objection here, anyone?
That sounds good.
Okay. We have no additional, unless someone is here for visitor comments, like Mr. Loeb? Okay. Moving on, any consideration of items for future meetings from any of the board members? Seeing none, we can discuss matters for closed session, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, student discipline, individual student matters, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety matters.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Co. County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering the closed session matters as presented in the March 14th, 2023 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Benhorst. We have a roll call.
Mr. Benhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Ms. Salus?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. It is my phone number. We'll have to put an update. 841. We'll get back.